I don't like the rise to the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Roll call, please.
Karen.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Warren County.
Here.
Whitmer.
Here.
Item number three. Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Admit. Admit item number nine.
The one thing I will add is that we are going to amend the agenda to admit item number nine on the agenda. Other than that, any other discussion? Roll call.
Karen.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Item number four, superintendent's report. Motion passes. Item number four, superintendent's report.
The main thing I have to talk to you a little bit about is some of our preliminary results on the OAA's. But I do want to give you a quick update on the roof. The rain is delaying things right now. They're probably about a third of the way. They hope to be more than half the way by the end of June. But we still are shook by them to fill and increase their proofs and do what they need to do to try and get us completed by the end of July. So they've finished the section. And I have a picture of the building. I'll show you at the end. But they have the seventh and eighth grade wing completed and the music room and part of the hallway up towards the office completed. That's not all they're finished so far. The results look pretty good. Preliminary reading is eighty-eight percent. Third grade reading guarantee was a big concern for us. We chose to use the Terranova on those students prior to their leaving school at the end of the year to find out what the results were. The students that did not pass were at least under three ninety-two or above. We could have used Iowa Northwest Evaluation Measurement, Association Measurement of Academic Progress, a couple of the tests that we could have used. All of our students are moving on to fourth grade, so I'm pretty pleased to report to you that we have no students that are being retained based on the third grade reading guarantee. Ninth grade math at ninety-four percent. Fourth grade ninety-seven in eighteenth grade math. Fifth grade reading ninety-one, math with eighty-one, science ninety-one. And sixth grade, both reading and math at one hundred percent. And since the testing has been happening, I've not seen a hundred percent like this at a grade level in my ten years as an administrator or teacher during the times that testing's taken place. So this is pretty incredible. And this is Cappizello in math, and this is Quinary in reading. Also, Mrs. Rodnick, special education. Definitely want to put my hats off to them, being able to dig down deep and get those kids where they were. I know last year, the fifth grade, which was the current sixth grade, did not pass the math as a group. So this was a significant change. Excellent, excellent job. Seventh grade reading ninety-eight, math ninety-five, eighth grade reading ninety-seven, eighth grade math ninety-seven, eighth grade science eighty-three. Just to look back from last year to this year, two areas. One, in reading, we dropped eight percent from last year's third grade reading score. We're up in math one percent. Fourth grade reading up three percent. And as you look at our scores, it's going to be difficult with some of those scores in the upper nineties to increase. But if you look at work, we're increasing in almost every area this past four years. Math was flat from the year before to this year for fourth grade, but fifth grade, sixth grade, all up, doing very, very well. Also, seventh and eighth grade, everything very, very well. Science has been one of our areas in the eighth grade that hasn't been very strong soon. Certainly an area we're going to take a close look at. So those are some of the results. Does anybody have any questions on the results? These are preliminary. We do expect to have some harder line numbers, but this is what we have based on what we received back from the state, what we've moved in with our alternate assessments.
Turn around once it starts.
We won't know that. I mean, you would think that with it being computerized, we're going to get it quicker.
Right.
But I couldn't tell you that. In fact, they're even talking about splitting that with, you'll be able to determine whether you want to go via the computer end or do a grid. Right now, there's some debate on whether they want, they're going to put it out like that. Because there are a lot of schools that certainly aren't ready technology-wise to take on this computerized testing for this. I know lots and lots of districts that have invested a ton of money in computer hardware to get prepared for this, and some of them still are not ready. And it depends on where they are funding-wise as well, too. Because obviously, if funding is in the negative, you're not going to, you're not going to be able to afford to put the hardware in place to accommodate these tests. Larger schools have way, way more that they have to test in a period of time. We think we're in pretty good shape if we want to go computerize then, but I'm not sure that the state is completely a hundred percent ready to go across the way. So they'll drag those hard copy tests in, and I don't know. You would think if we went computerized, we'd be able to get our results almost instantaneously. I know the GRE, you get an immediate result when you're done taking the test. Is that what the design is for this? I don't know. I think that that's the idea, is to try and get some more immediate result. But until they have it completely figured out, and they're going to tell us they haven't really told us we're going to get that result like we would like to see it. In fact, I met with Mr. Buzzer today, and we talked a little bit about, he would still like to do paper pencil. He just thinks, we did well this year. We prepared to take the test paper pencil. A lot of schools were, were spending a lot of time with getting prepared for PAR, which was two years down the road. And doing that, I think you put yourself in a bind because you're doing something that might not even be in place. We chose not to do that. We wanted to make sure that we were ready to take this test, and I think the results are excellent. You know, are we going to always look at some of the areas? Are we going to try and stretch our kids a little bit more based on our results? Absolutely. But I think a lot of schools are really worried about PAR and spent a lot of time having that happen in the classroom to be prepared to do this computerized. And, you know, we'll put that emphasis on this year, provided we're going to go that route. We should probably know, I would think, before school starts, whether we're going to be going the electronic way or whether we're going to paper pencil. They gave us paper pencil often. We'll probably take paper pencil. I think our staff does a pretty good job of it now. I don't think they have it perfected either. It is a different style of test. I'm glad I took a very similar type of test, and I have an idea of how that's going to look. I don't know that our kids in the third grade are ready to keyboard quite the way we want them to do. We are in the process, and Mr. Mosier is transferring over to technology. He's going to be teaching computer classes at the elementary and middle school level. And we think he's going to do a really, really fine job getting kids at the lower levels where they need to be to take that test. But if we have another year to practice, we'll probably take it again.
That's just absolutely unbelievable. And that, once again, brings to light the education that the students, that we're giving our students in our school district beyond a lot of the other school districts in the area, and the education that the teachers are teaching our students. I think that's just unbelievable.
And Scott, in August, I'll probably have access to all district scores in the county and Moaning County, and we'll do some comparisons, and I'll get you out information as to where we stand. You know, I think typically, we've been top of this county for quite some time, and we want to continue to be there. So we'll continue to work in that direction. But I'll have something hopefully in August for you, that I'll be able to access all the district's results, and we can do some comparisons from district to district from where we stand.
That's great. Congratulations to teachers and students. That's unbelievable. That's great.
So just a quick look at the roof. I don't know if you can see it up there. The, this section is completely done. I don't know if you can see it. It may have been done this time. The seventh and eighth grade is completely done, and they're all the way up to here. So this is all white. If you were up on the roof, it's all white now with the dirt last. And they have half of this section done. They haven't been able to make a lot of progress on it in the last couple of days because of the warm rain. So not as much as we would like to have done at this point. The more they get done, and right in this area right here is really bad. They can't wax the rooms or floors or anything until, because ceiling tiles continuing to cave in, and it's a mess in some of these areas, and even right in here, right outside of the office area. But mostly hallways. So this line here has been a problem for us, right in this area. And we're continuing to get water in the building. So as soon as they can get that tightened up, we'll be able to finish south side. It's coming along. It's coming along. Inside, inside's coming along. I know Mr. Marino in this hallway here has pulled up some of that green tile, patched in tile that he had, and has made it uniform at least. So I think if you walk through here, you'll see at least it'll be a little bit more uniform. And when they wax it, it'll blend in a little bit more with the old eight-inch tiles that are in that building. That's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Notice we have the principals here since it is July. So we'll move on to item five, public input. I have one person, Wendy Pancake, that has signed up to address this to see.
Hi. I'm glad. I just wanted to say that I'm really impressed with the test scores and with the job that our teachers have done with our students. I have always felt that our students have had a top-notch education here, and I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the efforts that the teachers put forth on behalf of our students and my children. I am, the reason why I wanted to address you is to, I'm disappointed in the lack of, the ability of you guys to come to some kind of understanding and agreement with the teachers and concern with Darcy Quinnlin. I know I spoke to you last time about her, and I just wanted, I know that an agreement could have been made, and you could have had an MOU or something, but I'm just really disappointed, and I'm worried. And I'll tell you why I'm worried. I think as I was reading, when I got the board agenda, I had it emailed to me, and I was looking through it. I looked at a lot of our teachers that are resigning. And I spoke with Mr. Kibler last week on the phone, and I, I'm worried that the lack of respect for our teachers, that might be shown when we don't come to agreements and we don't come to understandings, and that we're willing to work with our teachers, that I'm worried that we're going to lose good teachers. And when I looked through the agenda today, I saw several of our top-notch teachers are resigning, and it worries me for our district. And I just hope that as a board and as administration, that when you are working with the teachers, that hopefully we can have a level of respect and we can work toward agreeing and working out, you know, ways to make things better for our district. I know that Darcy had a great opportunity presented to her, and I've spoken with her several times about it. But, and if I were in her shoes, I would do the same thing. But I just think our district is losing out on someone who could bring so much knowledge and experience back to our district. We took on the MH unit, and to me, we owe it to those kids to be able to have someone, you know, with great knowledge like she would bring back to our district. And so I guess that's just my concern at this point. I'm grateful for our teachers. I think they've done a super job, and I just, I just hope that, looking at this agenda, this isn't a precedence that's being set, that we are losing good teachers because we don't have that, a level of respect and working with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven.
Consider approving the June 2014 financial reports.
Second that. Gloria, are there any comments you want to make about those reports?
No.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Sarah Loney as the music teacher for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance with board-approved scheduling, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clark.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Sarah Loney as the music teacher for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clark.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the 2014-15 membership dues in the amount of $528.50 for the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the 2014-15 membership dues in the amount of $528.50 for the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding.
I shall second the motion.
Roll call.
Warren County.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twelve.
Consider approving a contract with summer 2014 extended duty for Kathy Rob Carney, middle school slash elementary guidance counselor, for the purpose of scheduling up to five days at her per diem rate with approved documentation, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirteen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving a service contract with the Moaning County Educational Service Center for the 2014-15 school year, as follows. Special Education Service, $250,556.34.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number fourteen.
I move to consider approving employment of the following personnel on a supplemental contract for the 14-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, as listed on the next couple pages.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number fifteen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of the pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with the board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials, as listed below.
I shall second motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
Warren County.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number sixteen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the following personnel as volunteer for pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, as listed below.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number seventeen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials, as listed below.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call.
Warren.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes. And that motion passes. Item number eighteen.
I move to consider approval of $500 stipend for Leslie Coswell-RN for management, coordination, dissemination, and oversight of school district wellness and health activities.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number nineteen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the 2014-15 Southside Middle School student handbook, as approved with this, as provided with this agenda.
I'll second motion.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Warren County.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the 2014-15 Columbiana High School student handbook, as provided with this agenda.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving free recommendation of the Columbiana Public Library Board of Trustees, the reappointment of Sandy Hill as library trustee for a seven-year term effective July 1st, 2014.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Karen, now, roll call, please.
Warren.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes. That motion passes. Item number twenty-two.
I move to consider approving the Columbiana Public Library budget for 2015, as submitted by the Library Board of Trustees.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes. Item number twenty-three. And that motion passes. Item number twenty-three.
I'd like to make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Darcy Quinnlin, middle school, high school health and phys ed teacher, effective June 1st, 2014.
I shall second the motion.
June 17th, do that. That's right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Warren.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Darcy Quinnlin, head girls' soccer coach, effective June 11th, 2014.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Cynthia Schaubach, middle school kids' teacher, effective June 28th, 2014.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Clark.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number twenty-six.
I move to consider accepting the resignation of Benjamin Shaw, fifth grade math teacher, effective July 31st, 2014.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Warren County.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Clark.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number twenty-eight.
Make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Gregory Kibler, head cross-country coach, effective July 7th, 2014.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number twenty-eight.
Make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Gregory Kibler, head cross-country coach, effective July 7th, 2014.
Second that motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number twenty-nine.
I'd like to make a motion to consider improving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, coach of the pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials, head volleyball coach, Linda Knox.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number thirty.
I move to consider approval of tuition reimbursement per contract for Kim Sharshan, elementary principal, one hour and $175.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number thirty-one.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the following personnel to provide services to follow the Magallanesic Agility Services Program to the students of Hartland Christian School for the 2014-15 school year, as listed below.
Second the motion.
Discussion? I guess just a point of clarification, Hartland is the school system that exists and we are responsible for certain oversight. Is that correct? Or would you like to explain that?
Uh, there are services that by law we have to...we have to provide to them. They are within our district. Looks like Salem does, St. Paul's. Transportation, special services, they all come through the Worthy's Office and essentially even I cited all their requisitions, every requisition that they purchase services through. The funding that the government provides to them goes through us, back to them, in a nutshell.
Okay. Any further discussion? Just my question. All right. Roll call, please.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number thirty-two.
Make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Erin Rossi, intervention specialist at the Hartland Christian School, auxiliary services department employee, effective July 1st, 2014.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number thirty-three.
I'd like to make a motion to consider improving employment of James Marino on a one-year limited contract as a part-time custodial maintenance supervisor, non-bargaining unit member, effective June 1st, 2014, compensation at board-approved levels, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirty-four.
I move to consider approving a one-year contract for Josh Boone, technology assistant, effective August 1st, 2014 to July 31st, 2015, as recommended by the superintendent, for the contract provided with this agenda.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirty-five.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Leslie Coswell, one-year limited contract, as medical professional RN, non-bargaining unit member, effective July 1st, 2014, compensation at the board-approved levels, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Karen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirty-six.
Make a motion to consider approving employment of Anita Weber on a one-year limited contract as medical professional, non-bargaining unit member, effective July 1st, 2014, compensation at board-approved levels, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirty-seven.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Brooke Hitchcock on a one-year limited contract as medical professional, non-bargaining unit member, effective July 1st, 2014, compensation at board-approved levels, as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number thirty-eight.
I move to consider approving a 2014-2015 contract with Kim Van Cleek, transportation coordinator, effective July 1st, 2014.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.